Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to have a motion of council to approve the change of venue due to compliance with the current directives of the province of New Brunswick regarding COVID-19 pandemic.
So moved?
Moved by Deputy Deputy Mayor Harris.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Cook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Opening prayer. Chris, please.
Okay, let's pray. Heavenly Father God, we thank you for tonight and we are able to be here. And we pray, God, that as we continue in this new year and also this home stretch, that you would continue to bless this council. We pray that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them foresight, you would help them to make decisions that are good for this town and its residents. We pray, God, you would be with us tonight and bless all that is done in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. A motion to approve the agenda has circulated.
I make that motion, makes up the agenda.
Motion made by Councilor Allison.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Murray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Approval of minutes of previous council meetings, regular meeting of council, January 11th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Allison.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Cook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Closed-door meeting of council, February 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Cook. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, I will move on to the fire report.
Would you want to copy that?
Sure.
Thank you again for putting that together, John. Thank you.
And over here, I guess, socially distant. The first prayer is just our normal response for the month of January. Nothing spectacular there, I guess. A little bit of everything, a few pair accidents and whatnot. We do have a couple of people that are looking to possibly join the department, so that's good. So we're entertaining their applications and looking at that right now. Firefighter One training has begun virtually, although I don't know at this point how much longer we'll be able to continue. Typically, there was five blocks, and after each block, they would write an exam. We're coming to the end of Block One this week, so next week, we would have normally wrote exams, but because we're still in the orange phase, we'll have to write exams. So I'm looking for some guidance from MBCC and the Fire Marshal's Office on what to do. I don't want to go too far with the students because it is a lot of information. The exams are not easy to begin with, so my thoughts are we maybe go to the end of Block Two, and if they haven't come up with something for us on exams, we're just going to have to stop because there's no point in putting them through all this. It's two nights a week. It's a big commitment, and I don't want to set them up and fail. So we're working on that. Hopefully, we can come up with a different protocol because it doesn't sound like we're coming on Orange anytime soon. Quipment, we put the trucks through testing. They all passed, although one of them has shown its age. As I mentioned, I briefed CIO, we had on that. And as I promised last month, I got all the information put into the Fire Marshal's Office database, and from that, there was 156 incidents of the 158 that we had that are indicated in this graph. Highlights, of course, 48 incidents of those 156 were actually within the town limits. Another 77 are within the area that were contracted by the Department of Environment to provide primary fire protection to. Three were in, it says other municipalities, but actually, all three of those are in St. Andrews, so I should have said municipality. And then, of course, there was another 28 that were in local government communities that were not contracted, so for instance, St. Andrews or Black Tarers communities. So I broke that down. You see the percentages. And to the far right, you see two other percentages. And what that indicates is, for our primary area, which would be the town limits and the area that we're covering, that's the breakdown. So 38% were within town and 62% were in our contracted area. That's the highlights. I know it's hard to see, but if you want to read the exact communities and how many were there, you can kind of look at that graph. If anybody had any questions, I can, of course, try and elaborate for you, maybe not right now, but I might get hold of them.
That's fantastic.
All right.
So with the training, Sean, you say you go first, the second?
That's my thought. I mean...
Would you give a refresher? Because you get too much information.
Well, the issue is, is Firefighter One is pretty extensive, and we start typically the second week of January. We go two nights a week for, on average, about three hours in the evening, and that runs right into June. So we really have to...
Lot of information.
Yeah, you really got to stay with the program until it starts running into July.
Yep.
I know as soon as manuals around, I'm losing them. Like, they're not, I don't want to be there either.
No.
So to say we're going to stop for a few weeks and wait for yellow or do refreshers, now we're putting this right out in the middle of summer, so I'm going to have to just stop and pick it up again in the fall or something, I don't know. I really don't want to do that because we've got 25 students from all around the county, and we need these fresh blood, so to speak, into the service. We really need them. We don't want to lose them, don't want to discourage them, and it takes them long enough to get it as it is. It's a two-year process to get certified.
Is there an online way to do that?
Well, we're doing it online.
Okay, but they won't offer the exam?
But the exam process, they have to come in.
Has to be proctored.
Has to be proctored, and we actually had...
Could it be in a place like this where you can have it succeed?
Well, it is, and we've got it set up. We had picked one location that was approved by the Office of the Fire Marshal, and it ended up being in St. Andrews, and that's not really the issue. We had to do smaller groups, so as it was, I was going to have to break them up into three groups, bring in the proctors three different times. But in Orange, we're not supposed to intermix firefighters from other departments or any of that, and when they first set up these rules, I suppose they figured, well, you'd win to Orange and then you come right back out after a couple of weeks. But now, Orange is kind of what we're stuck with. If you listen to Dr. Russell and them, we're going to be in Orange until April or May, who knows? So if they don't change their policies, we're going to stop.
Okay.
So I've been assured they're talking about it, and they're going to try and come up with a solution, but I hope they do it soon because I don't really want to stop this program.
No, perfect.
Okay?
Any other questions for Chief Martin?
Just one quick one. On your graph there, how full of tanks hitting 10%? Is that just because intersection in traffic?
Um...
Because it's not population?
No, it's not population. It is, a lot of it is traffic related, the off-ramps and those intersections. There's a fair number of accidents, deer, a lot of deer strikes out around there.
Okay.
So that's a lot of them.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. And that covers Uncle Maine's, that whole area. We get quite a few alarms between Uncle Maine's and the Fire Marshal's as well. Both those locations have alarm systems and they're frequent flyers, I guess.
Yeah.
That would be a better description.
Well, thank you, Chief Martin.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to move on to building and planning reports. South West New Brunswick Service Commission.
I just want to do a quick introduction of myself because it's probably everyone's first time meeting me in person. So my name is Vivian Pung. I'm the junior planner at the South West New Brunswick Regional Service Commission, and I'll be giving the development office report today on behalf of our planning director, Alex Anderson.
Thank you.
So let's start off with a few current planning matters. First updated on the St. George Municipal Plan update. So the Service Commission is still working on background study for this new municipal plan. It's quite a large undertaking, and we want to make sure that we did the report thoroughly and did all the background research necessary, so it will take some time until we can deliver this report to council. The second update is on a zoning, rezoning application that we presented to council later in this meeting. And the last update is on a current application from St. George. So it is to construct two four-unit apartment buildings in St. George, and this development will be subject to terms and conditions in a variance application. So these two will be considered at the next crack meeting, and by then, the CEO and public will have the opportunity to give their comments and review the file. So for the development files to date, we have issued one building permit to date, and that values around $10,000. We have issued three development permits to date, and the total value is around $150,000. We have not received any signed permits, or we have not received any subdivision plans to date. And another matter that I want to bring to council's attention, it's not on the report, unfortunately. So the matter is, New Brunswick just adopted a new building code, so it's now Building Code 2015, and that's effective immediately, and that's also applicable to St. George. So for every application that we will receive from now on, we will be considering it over the new building code. Finally, on the regional planning update, we are continuing working with the community, with the Eastern Charlotte Incorporated, to work on regional planning issues relating to local housing and transportation in St. George. That's the end of my report.
Okay, delegations, seeing as there's none, I'll continue to the general government. The canal rebuild application has been submitted to the province on the rebuild for 2021, and we're awaiting response. Eagles Nest, St. Mark's Cemetery, benches on Main Street, all these projects are awaiting external approval or timeline. Splash pad fixtures have been ordered at the end of December. Exit 52 property, we have confirmed the town's ownership of the area at the end of Brunswick Street parking lot. We are surveying the property and will rezone it to commercial. GNB surplus land, we are in the process of determining cost for surplus GNB land south of Main Street. Casual work, we have posted for casual works, for the public works, or to at least build up our casual call-in pool. Business office, we are looking at promoting the office upstairs, Office 2B, as a business office opportunity for administrative businesses, meetings, virtual meetings, et cetera. Residents are reminded the curbside appliance bulk items pickup is currently not running due to winter and will resume in May and June. The town continues to monitor guidelines and restrictions by the province regarding events for this summer with the pandemic, but hopes to have a few outdoor events. We expect that due to the pandemic, we will not likely have a regular summer fest as done in previous years. As in the case each year, the winter parking ban is in effect until March 31st. Residents are instructed not to park on streets from midnight to 7:00 a.m., especially during nights when snow is expected. The old train station building has been removed over the weekend after the owners found repairs to be too costly. No plans have been received on what the landowners have in mind for the law. Residents are urged to avoid the ice, especially the ice on the McAdade River. Temperatures in our area have not been favorable to thicken the ice. Lake Yitobi has many open areas, especially at the entrance of the river and along the shore. Billy, residents will notice that Billy Williams has remained busy this winter with help to clear a few steps and door entrances around town. Billy is a familiar face with his summer trash pickup. And I wanted just to remind everybody that February Suicide Prevention Month, the TMO line is 1-800-667-5005, kids help phone 1-800-668-6868, or text connect to 686868. And also wanted to remind about 211, accessibility across the province for anything you might be needing advice on, from taxes to social, to community service, resources, basic needs like housing and food access, the support for youth, seniors, mental health here. And that's everything I have. Moving on to EMO status update.
Thank you, Your Worship. Since the last meeting of January, January the 25th, the latest wave that we just actually coming out of peaked at 348 active cases in New Brunswick. Since early January, daily new totals were in double digits until today, actually, February the 8th, when new daily cases actually went to the single digits to three. On February the 2nd, the province announced the introduction of the UK variant in New Brunswick. There are currently, as of today, 182 active cases with seven in hospital. A total of 1,346 cases have been confirmed since March of last year, with 1,143 of those recovered, and the resulting of 20 deaths in New Brunswick. According to New Brunswick COVID-19 Dashboard, which is available online, the province has administered 17,277 doses, with 4,460 of those reaching full vaccination. The town officials continue to attend a minimum of one weekly conference call with the province, which increases in frequency when in orange or red phases. Case numbers are going in the right direction, down, but residents need to remain resilient, especially with the arrival of the new variants in the province. Residents with concerns on compliance can call the Province of New Brunswick Compliance Line at 1-844-462-8387, or they certainly can contact the Town Hall, and we can put them in contact with the compliance line. That's all I have, Your Worship.
Thank you. Community service partners, I have nothing to report this month. As I said in my general report, we are going to be working on some events for the summer. We just don't quite know what's going to be impolled yet. Water and sewage, Acting Deputy Mayor Harris.
The water, the average water consumption for January was 853.1 cubic meters, or a total of 26,470.5 cubic meters. There's no ECO line or boil call form reported. Well levers are low, but stable. A water break occurred on the 9th of January at 167 Brunswick Street. It occurred while we were coupling the gate valve replacement at PV, PRV on Mount Pleasant Road. It was fixed by noon on the 10th. A boil order for both jobs was lifted on the 12th, approximately 30 inches of curb gutter was removed and 25 feet of sidewalk. The Brunswick Street break occurred on an overcast iron line and split the pipes down the side. It was replaced with a piece of PVC pipe and two couplings. Flashing on Harvest Lane and Masquerade, excuse me, flashing roads were required in rid of lines of air. A new transducer for well number three was installed in January. It tells the amount of water in the well and also shuts down the well if the levels drop too low. We have also been experiencing problems with the check valves on the booster station. They have all been replaced after just four years of service. The newest one was two, less than two years. CBCL has contacted suppliers for answers and wondered why they were breaking down. The fence repairs at lagoon number one are complete. The area next to the boiler blower building was the last section and was done on the 25th. A second gate valve failed in January, the 21st, this time at the end of the line on South Street. It was an eight-inch lateral feeding the north side of South Street. The bolt, all eight of them, rotted off. We had one new valve in stock and swapped out the top section of the old one with the new. No boil orders was issued by DOH. Samples were taken and came back good. A new pump for lift station number three has been ordered to replace the existing one that was in, that was ordered, older model that would not seat after the upgrades were done. Annual reports have been submitted for the water and wastewater to the province, and the ERS report to the federal government was completed as well. That's all I have, Your Worship.
Thank you. Any questions for, on the water and sewage? Hearing none, I'll move on to transportation. Councilor Cook.
The Christmas banners were taken down for the season, and the Christmas lights on the poles were left up. The tree at the post office has been lit periodically as the ground fault plug is in the manhole and is prone to tripping. If the tree is to be lit in the future, the plug should be moved to the light pole in the parking lot. The halftime had new brakes, a four-wheel drive actuator, and rear springs. These trucks have only two leaf springs in the rear. The windshield was also replaced after a stone chip caused a major crack. The sander module was replaced on the two-ton. The mirrors were extended so the driver could see past the dump box. The janitor closet in the front entry of the Town Hall was fixed up and the door replaced to make it full length to the floor. The unit heaters in the works bay were cleaned and the old fluorescent lights removed and two LED ones put up. Some pawed holes were filled as required. The water break on Latite Road has re-leveled with cold mixed asphalt. Some trees were removed on the trail next to well number four, and leveling was done with pit run gravel. A Christmas tree pickup was done around town on two separate dates. The trees were taken to the lagoon where they will be chipped in the spring. We have been preparing to remove the natural gas-fueled unit on the roof of the Civic Center. The gas was disconnected, the power removed, and we are currently waiting for the steel to fix the roof once the unit is taken down. This has been a major source of leaks in the roof from the day the building was commissioned. Some signs were replaced around town. We are waiting for no anchor signs for the estuary where Shore Loin crosses from South Street to the lagoon. Only two snow events occurred in January, both minor in nature. Some snow was hauled from the parking lot on Clinch Street. That's it.
Moving the plug, is that something that we can get done easily?
Yeah.
We should probably like...
We talked about that by a person's move down the avenue.
Yeah.
Need that big move in a lot of...
Yeah, I crawled in and pulled in.
That will be, we'll put that on the report as we get it up.
Tourism. Councilor Allison.
I have nothing to report for the month of January, Your Worship.
Economic Development, Councilor Murray.
So masks are still mandatory in all public spaces. Please continue to respect social distancing guidelines and continue to shop local and dine local with your steady ten.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you. Bill paid payable on the principle of January 31st, 2021, in the amount $149,144.37. Moved by Deputy Mayor Harris.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilor Allison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. New business, resolution of council to appoint Sean Morton as fire chief.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Cook.
Second it.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Resolution of council to appoint Derek Hat as fire chief. Oh, deputy fire chief, sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Murray.
Second it.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Resolution of council, first reading by title only of Bylaw 25B-2101, a rezoning of PID 15174642, from an R2 zone to an R1 zone for the purpose of locating a mini home as the main use of the property.
I can just give you a quick intro on that. Basically, this is one parcel of land on South Street. It's currently, right now, a R2, which is a mixed residential, and the request is to move that to an R1, single-family residential. And the owner is looking at installing a dwelling down there this spring, so certainly no problems as far as the town is concerned. It still matches up with the majority of our planning, especially when it comes to the R1, single-family residential. It sort of still works in that area.
And they're still going to have to follow the building by law?
The building by law, and certainly we're to continue to follow it as before.
Okay, do you want to have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Councilor Allison. Seconded that. Seconded by Councilor Murray. All those, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Resolution of council, second reading in its entirety of the Bylaw B-2101, a rezoning of PID 1517642, from an R2 zone to an R1 zone for the purpose of locating a mini home as the main use of the property.
Does Chris read that?
Yeah, I can read that. So it's Bylaw number 25-B-2101, bylaw to amend the Bylaw number 25-B being of St. George as follows. Bylaw number 25-B, the zoning bylaw of the town of St. George is amended by changing the zone as shown on the zoning map attached to said bylaw as Schedule A, therefore with the lands shown in Schedule 1 attached here to the forming part hereof, from R-2 residential mixed zone to R-1, single-family residential.
Motion made by Councilor Cook.
Second it.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Harris. Any question?
Question.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Resolution of council to request the written views of CRAC on a proposed Bylaw 25B-2101, an amendment zoning bylaw 25-B. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, Councilor Cook. Do I have a second there?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilor Allison. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Resolution of council to set a date for the public hearing of objections on the proposed Bylaw 25B-2101, amendment of zoning bylaw 25B.
I'll make that motion. Date wise?
How long do we have to?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah, so we could do much like we did the last time.
Just before the...
Have it before the regular meeting of March.
Half hour before.
So maybe at 6:30?
That's what we did last time.
6:30 on the 8th of March.
Okay, so do I have a motion to set that for March?
So moved?
March 8th at 6:30? Moved by Deputy Mayor Harris.
Second it.
Seconded by Councilor Cook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Awarding of tender 2020-03, production well number six, with change order number one.
So this is tender 2020-03, production well number six and well number two. Due to the phase orange of the provincial mandatory order regarding COVID-19 pandemic, bids were opened in private at 2:00 p.m. on December the 2nd, 2020, at the Town Hall by staff, town of St. George, and read aloud, and have been provided to CBCL Engineering for review. Tenders were received for the construction of the new well number six on Roverview Avenue and the upgrades to existing well number two on Venture Lane, the Adventure Center. The following contractors submitted tenders with the corresponding bid excluding HST. Fairville Construction Limited, 489115, $489,115. Fundy Contractors Limited, 619040, $619,040. Filson Limited, 620040, $620,040. All tenders received have been sent to CBCL for verification of cost and calculations and ensure appropriate tender security. and ensure appropriate tender security. The engineer's estimate for this project was $398,785, so that was excluding HST. So, uh, as you can see that we are over, uh, with the, this lowest bid. However, there is a change order attached to this. Uh, change order, change order number one is the removal of the construction related to well number two and the decrease of the contingency with this project. Uh, that basically equals $163,200 excluding HST. So including HST, it's $187,680. So, so all we would be doing is taking out the, uh, construction of well number two but maintaining construction for well number six.
Change three, two hundred, HST.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Cook to accept Fairville Construction.
I'll second that.
Accepted by Council Murray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Resolution of council, name and scope? Of project 11474, 2020-03/192856.00, from new well number six to rehabilitated well number two, to new well number six in detailed design of well number two.
So basically, it's just some formalities, uh, for this project, uh, just so council certainly aware that, uh, the scope of this project is changing, uh, from what it originally was. Well, I guess we did it, do an update on this project originally. Uh, one time, it was just well six only. We did an update to the, the project, brought in well two. Uh, so now we're kind of, basically going backwards a little bit, uh, just doing well six. Uh, but this will, this will be to change the, the last part of this project name so that it's just, we're just focusing on the detailed design, preliminary work of well two. And, uh, really what our plan is, is once this is all done, well six, we will be approaching, uh, the, uh, the other levels of government for an application, uh, to continue the work on well number two, uh, so we can upgrade that.
So just deviating one of the parts of the project we're doing.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Council Murray.
Second it.
Second by Deputy Mayor Harris. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried.
Yes, we'll set that for this one.
Review of policy regarding shut-off of water and sewage service on deliqued accounts. We had touched on this last month, and we were gonna come back to it this month.
Uh, yes, Your Worship, um, so really just a review of, um, policy 53A-20919, so 53A, uh, 2019. This was, uh, approved, this policy was approved, uh, for council back in, uh, back on the 11th of February, 2019. So, uh, I just want to review the termination of services section, uh, section two of this policy. Uh, so as per section 41 of Bylaw, uh, 27-C, a bylaw respecting water and sewage systems, the town may shut off the water services to a property if 45 days have elapsed since the date of billing. After 45 days have elapsed, the CIO has sent a letter to the ratepayer via mail advising that if amounts are not paid within seven days, the water services will be shut off. Um, we, uh, we've typically used the first Monday of April as a designated, as a designated shut-off day unless it falls on holiday, or there's inclement weather, or we're under a EMO status level, um, at which time the second Monday of April will be designated, or when the EMO status is removed. Uh, on the day of and prior to termination of service, the CIO with a member of the public work staff will, the person, deliver a copy of that letter and a copy of the ratepayer's account. So I guess with this, Your Worship, I'm just looking for, uh, approval from council to take out the EMO status, or at least to put it that if it's not at red level or above, um, and we can probably put that in there that it's...
Go forward.
So that way, there we can go forward. Does correspond with the, the mandatory order, uh, mandatory order previously that the province had, um, some aspects in that that dealt with municipal services and shut-offs. So those have since been removed, but with this policy stating that it's EMO statuses, um, I think when it was written back in 2019, we didn't, we certainly didn't think we'd be in an EMO, uh, status for such a long time, probably thought that, you know, if there would be some event that may happen in April, um, like a hurricane or, you know, flooding, what have you, but, uh, we didn't think that it'd be a, a full year-round, um...
Pandemic.
Pandemic that we're in. So, so I guess what I'm looking just for, uh, from, uh, council is to either take out the, the EMO status or to sort of, uh, uh, change that so that it's only in red or above, I guess, I think it's at that level.
Okay. So do I have a motion to change the wording from, to remove the EMO status level? Or do I...
I'd do the red level.
The red level?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just that, uh, one thing that we gotta realize too, that this is not something that's, has gone on, it's like, we have people that has two years of, you know, backwater.
Long before.
It's long before even that had started, so it's not something like it was changed. The only reason we gotta change that is because of the fact is we, you know, our even rears are that far. So I agree with what, uh, at least back of the son of red. And as long as it corresponds with all the other EMO or EMO, COVID status, whatever it needs to be.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Councilor Cook. Second by Deputy Mayor Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried.
That's good, because I've been wanting to shut off for quite a few years up at the house, we can't probably shut off, so.
They'll dig him up for you.
We wanted to go dig that up.
Yeah.
Correspondents, I see we have none. Is there any statement by members of council? I have one. Reminder, municipal elections are in May. Dominations papers can be submitted from March 20th to the end of April, due April 9th. And I'm hoping that anyone that wants to put their name forward doesn't wait, that they do put their name forward to give voters time, do their due diligence on each of the candidates running.
Back in March.
And that's everything. Anybody else?
So move to adjourn?
Do I adjourn?